All right, it's five thirty. Uh first, Bree, thank you for getting everything ready and set up. You're saving me a lot of the thing. Because I've been running from another board meeting, so I apologize. But I'm called ordered five thirty. Um review the library exits. Hello, how's it work? Um commenting questions from the public, I don't think we have any public. I'm here, so I think we're good. Um approval of the minutes from October fifteenth board meeting. The document was attached in the agenda. Um any motion to approve them and then we'll discuss.
Okay.
Yolsec, well done. Discussion, any discussion?
I would like to thank Anne for the minutes for June. I really appreciate the help, amazing help as well.
Take the bill with you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you very much. All right, no further discussions, all those in favor? All right, approved. Um additions and additions to the agenda, anyone else have additions and additions to the agenda? None noted, welcome everyone to the library board meeting for November. Uh I appreciate, I want to thank this the rest of the board, I was out of the country for seventeen days. And you all pitched in, especially the ants putting the agenda together. It dawned on me, I was sitting in the room that I hadn't put the agenda out, I was like, oh, I need to do that. And then I was like, Andy, they helped me finish it, so thank you very much, Anne, for pulling this agenda together.
Oh, I can help you. Get back in the country, not gotten it.
Uh the other thing real quick is I am using the library notification system to do that, is everyone getting it? Marty, I know you are now, I think you you signed up for it now, if that's working for everyone. Instead of sending another email, it just makes it flow better than when they get posted, you see any updates to it again.
Can I ask a silly question?
You may.
Just amongst all of them, uh do they, because I got the email today, is it?
There wasn't any change, I don't think.
I think it does it on the day of.
Day of, okay.
But when one gets posted, I believe it does it as well, so I think you'll get two. You should, you should get two.
They kindly saw one, but I'll go back and look at it.
Okay, maybe.
What are you guys talking about?
So in in the um city system, you can sign up for alerts for any meeting that's out there. And today, this morning, we all got an email at midnight or something, it was early in the morning of the library agenda.
Oh.
I thought when it got uploaded and posted, it could send out and all, that might be the warning, that's what I got, I'm sorry. So we sign up for the weekly morning email as well, you will get that a week in advance when the morning is coming out, which does the agenda. On the day of, you'll get the specific link to that, so that's the other email you may wanna sign up for is to get the weekly warning notifications possibly considered.
Thank you, I'm probably making it up, and I won't show you what my computer looks like.
Well, also, those of you on two committees for the board, um you're probably getting it double, you know, for your week, the week ahead, so, yeah.
Right, and the other committees, when communications meets, when governance does are all signups as well, you can get those as well, so you can be able to handle the bulk of it, okay? Thank you, um staff presentation, so.
We're early.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we have one more person joining us.
Okay, should we move on and wait till they get here?
Did you wanna, did you have any remarks?
Those were my.
To try to be brief.
Yeah, maybe we could have married you heard and then.
All right, can you give us our new report, Brenda Wood?
Okay, um we made five hundred eighty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents in October at the bookshop, so we made our goal. Not quite as good as the last couple months. Um we're coming to an end on the books on CD sale, so um we've extended it just a little bit. Um a couple of people who staff the Little Free Libraries are putting them out and getting some success, so as long as it can move along, we're happy. Because otherwise, it's quite a chore to dispose of them. So um probably by the end of the year, they'll all be gone. Um we're working on getting more uh book donations, and we're getting quite a few, we want to maintain our quality is the biggest part. Um I turned away a lady yesterday who brought in a box of books that were not so good, so um we had a conversation about that. And she luckily, she was pretty good, sometimes they can be kind of upset, so um. And after the holidays, we're gonna start doing one Saturday a month for um donations for donuts. And. Yes, it's happened, um and then at our next meeting next week, uh Caitlin Butterie, uh the adult services specialist is gonna come in. And she has booked and uh scheduled our winter, this should say winter concert series now that I'm looking at it, but.
Will some of them go to spring, I can't say April?
Yeah, okay, anyway, um. The friends pay for this um program and they're free to the public and there's four concerts, so I have some flyers I'll pass out there. Um it looks like a really great lineup of musical talent for everybody to enjoy. Uh we went, Sue and I went, Sue Reddick-Kanen and I went to the State of Vermont's Friends Forum last Saturday in Shelburne. And it was really good, we had probably fifty, sixty people there uh from all over the state. And um there were a couple of speakers and then we had an opportunity to um we had a panel and a discussion, give us questions about how different libraries handle um their book sales. And uh it was interesting to see some people have gone to things like plant sales to make money for their libraries. Um so we had some different ideas on fundraising and that was good. And um getting rid of books and improving donations, so it seemed like we all had the same concerns. And one of the big ones was how to get more people involved, which is certainly one of our issues, so. Let's see, we had a meeting with Bree and Silk and Kirchner from the city, and she is um in charge of this, or helping us with the storage walk. And so we got some information on that, a kind of a layout, she had a map, which I asked her to send. I sent her an email, because remember she had talked about sending us an email with the map in it and.
Would you like me to follow up with that?
Uh we'll give her a couple of days, I just sent it yesterday. Um anyway, it should be opening in the spring. And uh we're really going forward to that and also as a way to attract more members, um maybe of a younger crowd. So um we'll be having a lot more information as the time gets a little closer. Um we, the friends are going to be supplying Christmas treats for the uh December tenth library staff meeting. So that we can tell them how much we appreciate all they do for us. And um I asked yesterday if anybody had any favorite Christmas cookies requests, and somebody said, I never met a Christmas cookie and it didn't buy it. So and I seem to be a very picky parent, so um anyway, so that's sort of sums it up.
Thank you, any questions from Erin? Again, great job fundraising and everything you do, the the team and the way both you, both staff, the logo, you have a great job for the whole reason.
And making all as short as you were of books last month, it's pretty impressive.
Yeah. We've we've um, we don't have a great faffload, but we have what's out in the shop, it's good, so we're working on it. We're proving it, I'll pass them again, please put them on your calendar.
Okay, uh I. Yeah, I I I want to go back on the comment, I I I remiss in thinking, so um Bree, I'm sure you might bring this up again, but we did have an issue uh last week with um the public bathroom. An individual on where I went where um an individual was found in the public bathroom, City Hall unresponsive. And then later passed away. Um and I happened early in the morning, um I know that was an impact to the whole library staff and the whole community either. Uh I agree, we reached out to you as a board and everything, I think from what I understand, you might want to share anything, but I think your and your staff have handled that very well. Um so my thanks to you for handling a situation that's not in everyone's wheelhouse. To do that, it's a very difficult situation and everything, uh maybe when we get to your director's board, I don't know, if something's worried, if anything you need from us on the board on that, but I wanted to ultimately acknowledge, thank you to your staff and um if anything we can do as a staff to help as a board to help you through that or anything.
No, I I think I think the staff handled it very professionally, I you know, it was it was quite a shock to the custodial staff. Um and the city did a good job of responding, fire, police, and the incident was kind of wrapped up by like eight fifteen, you know, so patrons didn't come into that. But our circ staff did start the day in a rather, you know, I don't want to get into it, you know, that much again, but it was a really upsetting um way for them, but we um you know, we we talked it through a bit and um it was my we talked about, you know, it was a very sad event and it was very raw right when it happened. Um but we dedicated our library service to that person uh for the day and, you know, just really um served the uh city of South Burlington as best we could to honor them and honor that person. And honor all the people who, you know, responded and all of that, so that's that's how we framed it. And of course, you know, there's questions and sometimes answers and, you know, sometimes not, so um well, I I think that if anything, it it brought awareness to some of the um like whole building versus, you know, library kind of issues. So um I've had some really great conversations with uh Jesse Baker about that and really positive, so um I'm just hoping that that from a tragic incident, we can make some good improvements.
And I think it just reminds us, you're an integral part of the community. And we've put the proximity of City Hall and the library together, which has created some very positive things. And unfortunately, it can be a negative in this situation, so thank you to you and your team, so if you could please pass along behalf of the board, thank you for how you responded dedicating to the individual, but we as a board here support you as well on that, so if anything comes out in the future, please let us know how we can help.
Yeah. I do think that the it's an area where the library can do leadership, because we already have created policies, the board's created policies around kind of use of this space. And so, you know, that's that's the um way like the library can kind of, yeah, show that leadership and and that's what they're looking at.
Well, thank you.
It's mostly about these flyers, I'm really sorry, um we didn't, um you said that the this should be winter, I also noticed that the printing is very um.
Well, yeah, I just made a copy off my computer, so.
Well, I was gonna say, would it be possible to reprint them with the right season and it's also.
Oh, of course, it sounds like Mary printed those.
I printed them from from the home.
You know, you had a file. Oh, okay, I was interested.
Uh yeah, of course, Caitlin can, we can send edits to Caitlin.
I mean, help us them out, if they just wanted to.
Yeah. Yeah, we might not want to take them home, I don't know, yeah.
Well, they're fine for the paper.
All right. Yeah, for the vision we're in. All right, ready to go?
Sorry.
We're a little corner on the track. All right, welcome, thanks for sharing, so uh again, you want to talk to us about your teen tween collaborative program?
Yeah.
Tell us what's going on.
So I'm Carol, I'm Chai, the new, fairly new children's programming assistant downstairs. Um and this is Amanda.
Now, man, I think you've met all, Chai, have you met all of us or would you like us to do?
Um a lot of familiar faces, I don't think everybody.
So why don't we, why don't we do a quick intro?
Yeah, I don't think that, I'm new to the board, right, Ashley.
Stacy, we both know me.
Whitney Kertlinger.
Anne Malone, you're very brave to deal with this age group.
Monty Paul, nice to meet you.
Brenda Withie.
I'm Ted Laskin, the chair of the board.
Donna Swirna.
Hallam Madron.
Rebecca Stansky.
Mary Jones, I'm with the fronts.
You know.
Behind me, one more.
Are you ready to song on the video? Okay.
So we're here to talk to you guys about the Tell Us What You Want event, um this is a new monthly program that we're hosting, both downstairs in the kids' space and upstairs in the teen lobby, um the interchange where it's hosted by the month, so last month was in the kids' space, this month will be in the teen space. Um and basically, the goal of this program is to um get the six to twelfth graders into the library, hang out with us, have some pizza. Just talk to us about what they like, what their interests are, um and what they think that we can provide for them. So this could be, what kind of programs do you want to see at the library? What do you want the spaces here to look like? This could be like the furniture, uh what kind of crafts that they do, art supplies? Uh what kind of snacks do they want us to provide? Um and really, the goal long term is relationship building and having them grow, um do this program with us from the middle school space into the teen space and retaining that relationship with them. So last month, Erin and Amanda hosted the first event downstairs and I think Amanda has helped it as well.
Yeah, I can tell you how it went, so we we planned a little pizza and soda. Um and Erin and I decided on kind of a casual approach to getting our opinions on all these things, because obviously your team, or really anybody coming up, you'd be like, do you like this? What do you want? What is it? So like, it'd be intimidating and a little boring, so we decided to approach it as like a would you rather or this and that type thing, so we did a few silly questions like, would you rather buy one hundred duck-sized horses or one horse-sized duck? Uh and that can kind of got that conversation flowing, uh but we did that with a variety of things that we could then take back. So um do you, would you rather have a TV or a projector in the hangout space? Would you rather have rolling chairs or comfy chairs? Would you rather have programs on Mondays or on Thursdays, on weekends or weekdays, things like that? And um and we again interspersed with some silly questions too, would you rather meet Chan or Board of the Empire? And a lot of times that would lead to um information about their interests, what they were reading or watching or what they were listening to. Um so we found that was a really kind of low-key and fun way to get their opinions on things and also just start conversations. And um but we're probably gonna be doing something with that next week, I think, is our, or the next one. Um and yeah, just taking that approach and just giving them two or sometimes three uh that's the word, um just specific options, you know, to pull it from their imagination. And there are things that generally we've been thinking about doing to our spaces as well, or adding programs in on the thing that stays. Uh so hopefully, um we get um a continuous group going, and I think also one of the goals that we're hoping is that they will not just tell us what kind of programming that they want, but kind of get involved in the programming and helping us actually put these events together. Yeah.
It's always good to start with food and soda to try everybody.
Yeah.
Bring them in, um how many people did you get in, how many you had?
We got, so we've only done it this, the last month, um and there were three teens uh who, two of whom were in middle school, one is a freshman in high school. And then there was one teen who is probably eighteen or nineteen, who had graduated last year from high school. But she was young enough and close enough to what we were looking for, that she was able to offer some insight as well. That was helpful, especially for that older age group, I mean, you struggle to get so much.
So hard.
Yeah.
And were those participants just the same kids that kind of come regularly?
Yeah, yeah, it was, which is great, because again, like that we want them to be involved in what's happening at the the library. And we want them to know that we are in fact listening to them and that their opinions matter, because they are a member of the library.
Yeah, I think it's great you're taking, people are interested and you're trying to defeat that, to try and grow it into something even, I think it's a great starting approach to it.
I also just want to commend all the efforts, because um we come pretty regularly to the kids' space on the weekends. And I've just been seeing so many new faces and such a wider diversity of age groups, like I was shocked this weekend, I feel like I saw so many middle schoolers and like we, my daughter was a baby, we would read to her in that middle school space, because it was so intimidating, we felt bad that she'd be crying, so we'd be like but we'll go over here and now it's like the lights are on and it's bustling, like I definitely observed a shift, and so this is really exciting momentum for you all to carry, thank you.
Oh, also some good news, we uh recently got some funding to renovate the hangout space.
Uh to do some improvements, we've also total renovation.
Yeah. Um but uh we'll be adding some fun things like a TV, um some more comfy seating, we're gonna do some fancy ambient lighting. More art supplies.
And just work around the feedback that we get. For hangout sessions. A a new switch.
Oh, yeah, new switch.
Switch, too.
Switch, too.
Yeah, some Pro controllers.
So again, I know Bree would encourage you as well, but there are, the board is a resource here available to you, the friends in the library, the foundation, other resources from ideas and and financial support to what you're doing, so as you try to grow this, feel free to reach out to any of us at the board or any of the foundation members to try and help, if you feel like you're getting into a roadblock, you can try and help knock that down. Outside of the resources that Bree and your leadership team can provide, that's what we're trying to be here for, so um we encourage you, we thank you for what you're doing to a very unique space that we really want to grow and be more connected to, so thanks, and we're here to, here to help in any way we can.
On uh piggyback onto there, they're really cool, I mean, they're basically running a focus group.
Yeah.
For for tweens and teens, and so when um the South Burlington um City Center Collaborative or SV three C, you know, said we have some we hear you need some renovations or you need some ideas and we have some money, um Erin and I walked them around the kids' space and just showed how intentional everything is until you come to the tween space that just kind of feels like it kind of feels like an afterthought, you know, in a way, and and kids were asking for kind of simple things, like cool light. You know, I heard that the whiteboard was a hit.
Oh, yeah.
You know, you brought down the whiteboard and they could draw and just fun, they wanted a TV, not in the room with the dupe lows and. And just some of that feedback, and we were able to mention some of these suggestions, you know, able to mention that we're doing this focus group kind of program. Which, you know, might just seem like pizza and kids, but it really is, it's it's a focus group, and and they were really impressed, so um they gave us um twenty-five hundred dollars, we haven't got it yet, but um they, you know, for um some of those things. Like, of course, the kids wanted more computers, you know, and they want more, you know, this, this, and this, but um Erin has taken their suggestions and figured out what we can do with twenty-five hundred, and that feels very immediate for the kids, so imagine, you know, that you're a tween and you were heard by adults who got actual money for you and then helped make those changes, it's very empowering.
You go first. No, we.
Uh well, just two thoughts, because I'll forget them in two seconds, um one is that um I happen to live in a neighborhood that's like full of kids, you know, like a hundred houses, and I'm just wondering if there's some sort of like set of the highlights, you know, your top points that you'd like to get across about this space that, you know, I could promote either verbally or on my own, like neighborhood Facebook group, which I have, but also even front porch forum, because I think that can go a long way, you know, just that kind of referral from someone who could say that, you know, your child would really like this space. Um and then, as I was just looking at the library of things, I just wonder how much like cross-pollination happens, so like if you were to take the three D letter writer and bring it in for nap, and maybe you do all this, sorry, um but you know, just to sort of like maybe some non-tech things, but that are actually really fun, that are in there and it kind of exposing them to that resource, that's all.
Uh I've done it with the board games before.
Yeah.
They're like a program, board game program or tabletop gaming program, and I'll take a bunch of the games from the library of things and then I'll.
That photo printer thing, I think would be a.
Yeah.
It, I know there's a cost and you can only have five things, but I mean, I'm sure we could donate some more pictures, or kids, they just love photos, right? At age group, so.
And my question was the same as um Rebecca's, it would be great to have some talking points or some language that we can share in front porch for front porch forum or with our neighbors, because I think many of us have a neighborhood with children and, or excuse me. Still gonna call them children, I call my thirty-year-old children. That we could share and express, here's what's happening, and language either from you or the students that are helping you would be nice, because um I won't be as articulate in the cool things they give me.
I mean, for the older, the thirteen to to eighteen crowd, I try to have something going on every Monday at four, so you can just rent that, Mondays at four at the library, there's gonna be something. Routine, yeah.
I have a curmudgeonly parent request.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Um as you're thinking about the the teen or the tween space, the middle school hangout, um so I have both the child who plays on the computers, because he's ten, and then I have the five-year-old who likes to see whatever it is the kids are doing on the computers. Would it be possible to make computers such that they are less visible to all small children? Um because I know that there's a lot of things that people are playing on them that are maybe not suitable for the kids who are playing train sets, like right there, um I don't know if you've noticed this, actually your kid is drawn to the screens, because whenever it's on, it is interesting, and oh, look, now there's a zombie being decapitated, and now I have to have a complicated conversation about some of these.
We, yeah, we were thinking about moving the computers to the other side of um a linear space, um but there are some like space issues, because it really is.
Yeah, and a little little look there, yeah.
Yeah.
Also, like how how private of a space do you want to keep?
I don't know, I want to like, but I haven't noticed that, so maybe.
Do you have like screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Here.
Well, we we did talk to kind of IT and facilities about the, it's it's a little bit challenging to move those across the room with cords and plugs and outlets and all that, so it it's like a little bit more complicated than just moving them, but that is the overall plan eventually is to get them on that side and then have that beautiful, like, kind of coffee bar type table, you know, more like and it's like some succulents and some pool lights and some crappy things, you know, that that they would kind of like, but it is a draw, those those computers, like they're real nice gaming computers, and they're choosing to play decapitating zombie games in a library.
Which is great.
Which is great.
I do not, but but.
Yeah, but they.
So it's being so adjacent to the space with the very small children.
Yeah, yeah.
We're talking gaming a lot, so is it mostly boys that you're seeing in the stage?
Um middle schoolers, yes.
Not that girls don't game, but just.
Just showing up?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is primarily boys uh who are using that space. And it's like a regular friend group as well, and there is one girl who attends with them, but I don't think she's participating in the video games as much, um yeah.
Yeah, quite.
I just, I just love that this is so nonjudgmental, that the kids can say what we really want is a TV. Or saying, oh, you can't have TV, you're not supposed to watch TV, or anyway, I just think that's great, that listening and
Yeah, and I would.
Giving them options.
For crafts, have you considered crafts made with old books on CD? Fun in this rock.
He hung that, didn't he?
Something shiny.
I definitely.
Play your doll.
I have definitely done a craft. I still just want to hit him up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All the work you're doing, it's great to hear, and thanks for you. Okay, next, here in the foundation.
Uh so the South Burlington Library Foundation met on the Thursday. We have raised around, well, it was announced in October, who'd five thousand from an anonymous donor. The annual appeal is going to be mailed out just after Thanksgiving. We're gonna add five hundred sort of random addresses from South Burlington to the appeal, like trying to do a cold call. And try to make different addresses each time, so we can add a few each year. And thank you to Bree who had talked to the staff and thought about. And thank you to Bree who had talked to the staff and thought about different possible uses for foundation money. It was like to get Jennifer sometimes to say, here's what we want, money for, so we're all, I think, and we'll spoil them if you ever mention them.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
But um, okay.
I only have fifteen minutes, so.
Okay, okay.
I have some other like things to talk about.
Okay, um, I mean, just more books and audio books hopefully and.
On Libby, yeah.
On Libby, yeah, and uh, for ebooks and audiobooks.
Yeah, she's the mess right now, so so I've taken that back. Like, I'm doing the Libby, it was, it was, kind of went into no man's land. And so you might have noticed your hold times went up like crazy recently, and so I've taken that back and luckily we can get some of those knocked down. With some money from the foundation.
And also, two of the best things in the world are coffee and the New York Times. And there might be possibly a coffee station at some point and we free coffee. You know, I believe in the library and possibly a New York Times digital subscription.
Starting November seventeenth. Oh, yes. Uh, I haven't, yeah, the lady's on vacation, but it was supposed to start November seventeenth, but it might not. So so it will be digital subscription to the New York Times for every like library user. You'll have to log in with your library um, card and you get a code that's good for twenty four hours of the New York Times. Um, it saves your games progress, so if you're the wordler, you know, and you need to.
It was street commitment.
Um, yeah, you get all the, you you get them all backed, you know, all the ones that were uh, behind the paywall. So you can play the, you play the games, you can do wire cutter, the cooking, but also the New York Times is translated into um, a lot of different languages too. Um, so hopefully, I mean, just if you had a personal subscription for the year, I think it's like a hundred and twenty dollars or something. And so that's a huge savings.
That's a twenty four hour access.
It's twenty four hours, you can do it every day.
Okay.
You know, that that you wanted to, um.
That's great.
And thanks to the foundation, you know, it's a, it's about thirty four hundred dollars, so um.
It's, it's not a issue.
Thank you, yeah.
And then you can donate your New York Times subscription money to the foundation.
Oh, I'm like, how am I gonna write this?
You you could, or?
Circle of flesh.
Yeah. Uh, so we'll see, we will see how it works, um, you know, it's kind of a new thing, but I mean, they do that for. They have a library, like, kind of subscription program, so um, just the lady, the men, lady we've been working with has been on vacation.
That's awesome.
So we both.
Because, because, yeah, because we could talk about foundations and what.
Okay, we this, we were all, everybody was just vibrating. It was mad, but it happened.
I can only imagine.
Um, and also finally, we're working on a, a marketing plan for the foundation, folks are doing that, we'll coordinate. It comes quite.
We can order that. We'll see.
We'll see, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
I'm excited, just, I remember leaving I, that the foundation and that committee and yet it's coming to find me yet.
On full circle.
Yes.
Done, but yeah, it's.
It's all our jobs.
Any questions for you?
Um, is the newsletter that I got from the foundation new or I just?
Was on the email, like.
They had newsletters.
Okay, then I just might have gotten one.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Just sort of set up. I wonder why I would go first, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was lovely, yes, very. I never heard of this.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks for nothing, yeah. All right, Bree, floor is yours.
Okay, uh, well, I have a couple of fun things, we'll keep the fun stuff uh, kind of rolling, um, some show and tell. So, so Stacy hasn't seen this brochure, uh, yeah, Holly might know someone of the, yeah.
Do you imagine?
Um. But anyway, uh, this is the uh, new flyer, or not new flyer, the new brochure. Uh, that Sue worked really hard with with Andy, um, they're available. So.
No, this is new, new one.
This is new to you.
This is newer than the other green one.
Earlier.
Okay.
This is a mockup, this is the really cool one.
This is the real one and we've already, we've already ran out of the first running of them and so we had a second set print. We also, um, I worked with Holly at the town clerk's office, these are now in little like loose site containers at the town clerk's desk. So when um, someone is paying their taxes, they can see it and take it, um, or um. We have plans to put them at the welcome center when that, you know, is open and um, so people can learn about the library that way. Or be like, oh, the library, here's the library, oh, it's right there, you know, uh, and so they can go in. Um, if you're new to town, you might not know, um, and then um, these are also being given to anyone who is getting a new library card. So that has information about the library. Um, we only chose to do a small run of printing because the hours will be changing, um, but you know. But speaking of library cards, we have a new kind of library card you can get. Um, so many people don't carry a wallet anymore. Of course, you know, also, you know, keys are going away too, um, but you can now get your South Burlington uh, library card on a key ring. Um, it has every, this is the actual card, it has the barcode, it has a space for you to sign. Um, it has our home card logo here and it has your expiration date. Uh, so all the information, if you're going to another library, this is all you need, um, is on there. I mean, obviously, you'll probably have to show ID for your name and tell them your address and all of that for their computer system, but um. Yeah, Sue was like, people been saying, you know, they like the key tags that some other libraries are doing and I'm like, why can't we do key tags? And so we have a key tag, so.
That's great.
Um, and a big, big thanks to Sue for like doing the design, but then I was like, why don't we send this to Andy at the communications, you know, for the city? Um, that's his kind of graphic design job as in his wheelhouse and, you know, he made it so much better. Like just the correct pixels that you need for the picture and um, you know, put this here, put this there. We had a lot of information to get on a small key tag and and we did it. So we also, um, you can get a full size card, you cannot get both. Uh, because the barcodes are unique, you know, so some people you can get both, but that's like a combo printing, is where they're actually printed on. We have about ten thousand of these barcodes, I don't know who bought them last, but it was all like a big purchase and they're kind of expensive. So it's like, let's come up with a solution where we can use the supplies at hand. And then also our, we were short on regular cards. Um, but we had a lot of blank plastic cards for some reason, like thousand of blank plastic cards. And instead of throwing those away, um, we also working with Andy got a sticker designed. That wasn't just like a this sticker, this sticker, this sticker, that looks like we made a plastic card into a library card. It's like a sticker for the whole front of the card and so we're reusing those resources. So using up some stuff, doing some new things, um.
Is there a key card, like this option for folks who currently have cards?
You may swap in your uh, card without a fee, but then if you like, don't have a card anymore, like I lost my card, then that's the one dollar replacement.
Is is there, this is next technology, I mean, using your phones, the electric, is there an electronic card, is that something that's out there or?
You can take a picture of the barcode, I mean, that's, it's, it's, yeah, it's kind of low tech, but yes.
That's.
Too short, it's too.
I I don't think that the readers, the automatic readers will read it really well, um, and if your phone is all like crap and stuff, then uh.
But assuming your phone's in good condition, a picture of the card would work as well.
We can log into your library account online and it says my barcode and you just click that and it's always there, you can scan that.
Yeah, or you can save it, you can, you can save it into like your wallet or you can save it onto your camera roll. Um, or you can just take a picture. And let's see, um, and also, just I'm very, very proud of the programming that the library is offering this month. And I just, I know that we used to, Nathaniel would print these things and no one printed them for me and I didn't think of it right beforehand. But I made some copies off of the board and I know that this is, this is fixed online, okay, this doesn't look super great. Um, but we have some really, really interesting programming going on this month. We already had Vermont, for Vermonters, which was about eugenics movement, um, it's a book that was uh, published by University of Vermont Press. Um, and so the author that joined us from New York City via Zoom, talked to a group of people and was very um. Good, you know, presentation, not not like a, hey, great topic, you know, but it's an important topic for the history of our state. Uh, we also have the um, Light Pirates of Vermont Humanities Council, Big Read, um, I guess they don't, they call it, they don't call it Big Read anymore, but their book. Um, and this community conversation discussion is happening this Saturday, so.
And how will they? When you're with me.
And then we'll finish this.
Yes.
Book of shame.
That's, you know, it's 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 facilitated by um, Melissa Lang, who is a facilitator for Vermont Humanities. Um, and uh, it is a really good, it's a good book, it might give you some climate nightmares, but it's, and hopeful. Uh, it has kind of a unique ending, so you really should finish it if you haven't, um, yet. Before the discussion, because it might get ruined or you might be like, what? Um, because it gets a little fantastical at the end. Um, so that's happening and we have a couple of programs about scams. Um, this one is with um, various members of the federal and state fraud prevention experts, so some. And this one was just picked up by um, media TV or town meeting TV, they wanted to to, um, so they're gonna share this one out even further. Um, working with our community partners, um, and we have one about, um, can you trust the media? You know, in an age of AI and are you only surrounding yourself with a certain bubble of information? This one, they also wanted to uh, record, but we we said, no, thank you. So the people can have an honest conversation around, you know, um. That, you know, they might have a story like, I did this and that could be embarrassing. Um, and then we also have an author top, um, cookbook author, famous cookbook author, Jacine Bullet Prado is promoting her new cookbook book. So working with Kiss the Cook and um, and up here, so we have a cookbook club and this is a great tie in too for the cookbook club and promote that, so.
Is Sondra coming?
I don't know, no, she can sit next to you.
It was very spread for the holidays, you know, they were.
I don't know.
One more.
Sorry.
My, well, that's even the auditorium, will you change it on the last?
I like, she was.
That was the anti-matter room, so.
Yeah, yes, it's, it's.
They were standing quietly in the halls last time.
Oh, my goodness, yes, so.
It does put Sue's in the movie.
Yeah, it's, you know, it actually, it actually doesn't say here on the flyer, um, but it says, um, but that's what I, I know it's the auditorium, so. Anyway, um, I, we can almost make some colored copies of these for you guys to distribute, but I kind of forgot that part. This is only my second quarter. Um, and you know, I I was telling, I was meeting with Stacy, my mentor, um, and I was just telling her, I'm kind of moving into the, um. Now I know what I don't know, kind of phase of being new, um, but it's 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 going well. Last week was tough for a variety of reasons, um, but you know, this, the staff and the city team and everyone's been very, very helpful. Um, getting me up to speed, because there's a lot of new things affecting the library for the city uh, on the city side. So you might have noticed, we all have new email signatures, so that was implemented, um. All city staff has a new uniform email signature, which is probably my fault, because I asked if we had one of those when uh, we meet. And Andy was like, that's a good idea, and so, um, but we, I allowed, um, we had our staff meeting this week, full staff meeting. And I allowed people to either have done it beforehand and get to leave fifteen minutes early or um, have to do it in the end of the meeting with some help. Um, from various team members and so the library is leading the way on having it done, um, so it's done. We also have to change all of our passwords into pass phrases uh, from IT and um. The whole city is getting a new accounting system December first, which is going to be a big lift and completely change the way that we do invoicing. And accounting, um, but yeah, but we're all new together, we're all new together, so so.
Merry Christmas.
Very, yes. Here. So maybe we will all default on our bills.
Let's save time to get.
Okay.
Saving time.
At least they collect their taxes before they went up.
I think part.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so so that's, that's what's um, some of the new stuff and then um, you know, obviously we have three new staff members we have hired. Um, and I have one more meeting with finance this Friday, finance and HR. And then I think we'll have, like, be able to announce that we'll be open on Sunday's January fourth. So that is my, um, and then I'll be working with um, Andy in communications on kind of like getting that out in as many ways. Maybe the comm squad, maybe the, you know, board once we get that out, we'll, we'll um, spread the word. Um, that we are getting that done, you know, it's.
In order to work.
That's a heavy lift, I know, there's a lot of, it should come in or right in the middle, the, that's.
It makes me like a little nervous, but you know, it's one of those like pull the Band-Aid off kind of things, like, whoa, we're doing this, we hired new people, um. And in order to kind of support that, um, we've also transitioned the way we visualize our staff calendar from all up in um. Outlook, crammed up in there to Microsoft Shifts, which is a, a new, also gonna be a new thing for everyone in January, but we have access to it. We're gonna roll it out and demo it in our December staff meeting with cookies. We need to make everything better, but I think it'll be easier for staff to see when they're working. And it's also easier for leadership to see where the holes are, because it's all color coded and it's like, oh, we only have three greens working.
Right.
You know, we need another one um, in there. And so that's all seemed like kind of a, a big lift to January and then um. We're going to also be doing our interlibrary loans online, that's gonna be coming online soon. We've got the form regimen, we're working on the back process, um, of, and our, our staff member who is in charge of interlibrary loans. Is out on medical leave and is coming back the eighteenth, so we didn't want to spring it on them. And so we um, we're gonna let them get used to the idea a little bit, but it should be that. And then will, that hopefully will spur more online forms, um, for people, because it is a barrier sometimes to get here, especially in the winter. Or or to navigate a process, do I call, do I email, do I have to go in, what do I do, so, yeah. Um, I presented the annual report, you know, you guys all got a copy of that. Yes, uh, that one was um, definitely started by Jennifer, but I I kind of call it like group work, you know? Um, and so it's like the um, getting someone's partially done assignment and so um, that was fun to finish. You know, it it was actually nice because I got to learn a lot of what was done in the past and I got to figure out, you know, kind of think about big actions to do in the future. And it was a great exercise, um, and it was fun to find pictures, thank you to Holly for the photo bank, um, and useful pictures. And um, and to rewrite some stuff, because you know, when one person writes one way, one person writes the other, it's been jarring. Um, and so.
It can be good for us.
I think it can be good, and thank you Ted for yours, um, as well. You might, you will notice I had to make a couple of edits and changes, not for any words or anything big, but. They were like, this is so weird. So, so not everyone on the board who's currently on the, was mentioned on the board, but then I did put you guys in. If you're new, I put you in because I'm like now serving on next year's board is so and so and so and so, so and so. Um, let's see, I also um, worked with Brenda on the budget a little bit more. Um, so I'm learning the city's budget process, I've been through two budget congresses with all the departments. And um, I will say that our budget got nibbled a little bit as it everyone's did. This is a tough budget year, if you're on any other boards, um, you know that the kind of directive from the city council was pretty. Like, let's not raise a ton of taxes, um, and so there are a couple of things. And so there are a couple of things that got, I would say nibbled, really. It was, the library was not as impacted as some other places. Um but besides staffing, we don't have a ton of discretionary funds, you know? So when they take a thousand dollars out of something, you know, like marketing, um and or you know, um I do have, I don't know I have the budget here, you know, I could put it on the screen, the one that they have given, but I, it's not finalized yet, so I don't know if it's exactly worth.
Yeah.
Looking at a lot of.
I have the operations process out.
Yeah, Jesse said I could show it to you guys if anyone is interested in what it looks like now, but but basically there are a couple nibbles. Um the big thing is that the um, yeah, Brenda and I talked about this, the big thing is.
That's your connection right there.
The um self-checkout machines, which we had put in um for twenty thousand dollars, got put down to eighteen, you know, which is fine, but also there um got moved into off the CIP capital projects into a one-time funding, so it's currently, there's one-time money that can be used, yes.
I'm sorry, are we getting more of those?
No, those. They're they, yes, the technology has become obsolete, um well, or will be becoming obsolete. No, it seems like we just, we just. Well, so we might not be getting the exact same thing. But we want, we needed to replace the, put a replacement cost in. Um so originally that was put in the capital budget, but but you know, they they put it in one-time money. And they're also like, you have a lot of money over here in this leftover FY twenty five. And so from the, you know, kind of gifts and donations and it's like, we'll put nine thousand in and if there's overages, we might scoop some money from there, um.
And to to interrupt, the way that the word of it fact of them that you communicated was that the possibility exists that whatever you decide on, it may not be the nine thousand that we envisioned, nine thousand per machine that we envisioned today.
Right.
Because this is a year, could be a year from now. So the way that wound wound up being worried was that whatever the expenses, we're hoping it's less, nine thousand comes from the city and then the library portion kicks in. So if it's twelve thousand total, nine thousand first.
And they were, they were fine.
They were very good, thanks.
Yeah.
And again, I think the the longer term is just encourage you to use that gift money so it's not seen.
Yeah, there's nothing we can burn it on before.
No, it's it's.
And I, and that's not to be, that's.
Yeah.
As, that, yeah, so as that comes in, it's been processed through. But I think that.
I spent a lot of my speed on your times and Libby.
And that's exactly what I, I think that's, that's some of the things that the foundations and everything is. When it comes in there, it makes the move.
Yeah, yeah.
And the, and I think that's gonna be a great opportunity for you to.
Thanks, everybody.
Oh, Mary.
Someone sent me this. Whoever has the details. Do you have the details about the times and the? Will it be still? I run the, I run the foundation on social media, even though I'm not on foundation anymore. Um so if you already send that to me, I can put on this.
That we're, that thing in that a little.
When, whenever that's happening, what?
I started last week, um I bought nineteen hundred dollars worth of Libby uh to try and um it, because it stuff hadn't been bought in a while. Um.
Wow.
And I just think it got decentralized in a lot of places and so I'm just taking Libby back because she's out of control. And um like we had thirty, we had thirty seven holds on one book. And and.
I found little messages on my thing that said what the.
The library has just bought seven copies and you're no longer.
That's great.
They have.
They have, and they're long everywhere, I mean, you know, they're paid.
Right, they're good, but they're not, yeah.
Yeah, and you can put the stuff on hold, it it's, I mean, it is, there's, there's not enough money. So like a a Libby copy of a book is like ninety-five dollars.
Sure.
So if I buy four copies of this book to try and alleviate, you know, these holes, it's gonna take a while, but it's like four hundred dollars in those four books.
Yeah.
It's always the most surprise when they pop up.
It is, it is. It is until you all, it's like a pop-up and then you're like.
Before you can buy your chino.
Yeah.
It's hell of a thing. But obviously they're like.
Yeah, I know. Well, and some people are like, I don't wanna wait, so I don't even bother, you know, but whatever, but they, that's what people who have, they can afford that or that's a priority for them. So um but I, it should be, you could just say like, you might, damn this, Libby's moving again.
Yeah.
That one, I feel like I I can, I can uh, I can improv that one, but the, the times, there's like specific things that would be helpful, I don't know what it ends up.
Oh, the New York Times.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry.
Yes, oh, yes. Like, I was like, what time?
The New York Times, when does that start and how do they do it is what I need to know.
Yeah, I need, I need to know that too.
Well, wouldn't you know, if you put that.
I will, yes. Yes, it'll, it'll be a whole, it'll probably be a big thing.
It'll be a big thing, okay.
New York Times has like a whole onboarding
Yeah.
process and.
I know, even a market that is a foundation, then, okay.
Yeah, you don't run a foundation to serve you.
That's fine, it's a foundation.
Yes, it will go on our website sponsored by the foundation, um and I was, and yeah, and I have a, I have a cool other idea for the foundation that I'll talk to foundation about. And then also, we finally received our quarter one numbers from the um, we were in September for a long time in the city, we're in October now. Um and so uh anyway, we're fine with our budget. I I mean, I don't wanna bore you with all the numbers, but it's a little actually underspent in a lot of places, but I think that's just because of the transition. And um also with summer reading, like the the youth staff tend to just be busy doing summer reading and not purchasing as much. Also, books are published in October for the holiday season, so all the good books are coming out like right now. And um same thing in the spring, in the summer, like Bee Trees. Oh. Okay, um. For right now, you know, yeah.
Any questions for Bree? Again.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Thank you.
Now I wanna get a key card.
Well, I, yeah, you can ask, you know, but they're, they're not out in like the whole general public. But they, but they made a sign and I.
I saw it.
Yeah, I saw it.
Yeah.
The policies.
So he knew that.
I I know, that's, I put it on there and Sue was like.
I saw it, I was like, wow.
And I said, oh.
It's great.
Yeah, so I'm also submitting stuff to City, the City News. It's on my calendar just, and I asked the staff to give me those kind of highlights.
Anything? Anything?
Oh, not a lot, but it's that on the uh the nine thousand, which was more of a, maybe a little more of a bite than a nibble, but.
That was a bite, everything else was a nibble.
Yeah, there were a couple other nibbles that I thought that that brings a view of like um the tuning line, I was the one for marketing, the one for library things, we put in two thousand. They asked, they came back in your Congress and said, can we do one thousand? Um great, they got them on the table, first year, next year will be happened.
You just put it, put it in the.
You just, yeah, that that evolved fights to pick, that was crazy.
Yeah, and they've nibbled a few other things, they took like a thousand dollars from our books.
Yeah.
Um but you know, five hundred here, five hundred there, you know.
Why we have.
Yeah.
And then it, but by and large intact, which was great.
Right, they weren't like cutting stuff or, you know.
Give them what they need.
Yeah, and and I I do think that it was a nice compromise to say, yes, we'll play your, I don't wanna say game, that sounds stylish, but we will play ball.
But.
It's a, well, well.
That's a common.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it keeps the conversation.
That's right.
So those were, and so, but now just on to December to the final.
Yes, and we'll be, I'll be presenting um the budget slides with Adam, again with Rec. And we kind of go after, it's a big long day.
Yeah.
It's always nice to go after. And any municipality is nice to go after the fire department police department and you know, we we have pictures of like smiling kids and um on our presentation and.
Folks, it is now six thirty, the library will be closing in thirty minutes at seven o'clock. As a reminder, the multipurpose will shut down at six forty-five and no new library cards will be issued after that time. Please grab a.
All right, anything else for?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Dublin to not imagine.
Okay, so this was our first mini-meeting, the brief, which was lovely. Um and uh Bree jumped right in and we started talking about our social media policy and how we don't have them. Um which is an issue, Stacy pointed out that the city is developing one, so we've kind of been on hold anyway, just the rules of the city's going to say. But Bree didn't know correctly that um the library should have. The library, it will impact library in ways which are different from the city and so we should have a sense of that. So that's one of the things we're trying to reinforce forward. And but our big thing is our debt management policy and many thanks to Marie for doing the edits and getting that rolling, I don't know that we actually changed much from what Marley did, but um I think everybody has a copy of the debt management policy, so.
It's the agenda, but if you don't have, have your copy, you're.
I have a copy as well, anyone need one?
No, um I would like to put forward a motion that we accept this, uh that the board accept this policy. I'll second it. Oh, well, I was.
Are you adding one?
I was asking for a motion.
Okay, oh, you were gonna, you're not.
I'm not making a motion.
Oh, I'm motioning.
Okay, so you got one motion, any discussion, any thoughts about it?
My look at it summarizes exactly what, I think from Rory's perspective in the library, I think they're so satisfied their needs.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think it's very clear, I mean, we're we're gonna know everything that, I think this does, everything the community needs to know. So um and again, policies on the policy, we they're on the table, but um can I create a second motion to? Thought, okay, all right, all those in favor, say aye.
And again, thank you to the team for putting this together and there's a lot of consent and thank you everyone, it was we we worked through this, but I think it'll work very well.
Yeah.
Yep.
So we have a procedural question.
Uh huh.
How, how, will this sound, is someone gonna put like the board approved, who does that, is that we, you, okay, ah then.
That's in the vote too, I have written down and Mike and then I.
Yeah, you're, well, I'm just gonna send it in here, that's easier and I can get it to Mike. Mike and I have been moving some stuff around on the website, if you've been.
I'll send it to you.
Yeah, yeah, so that, yeah.
And then you send me a copy, so I enjoy the treatment.
And I'll send it to you. Yeah, that's our final.
And then if Rory has any questions on implementing, I will reach out to me.
Okay.
Because I'm the one kind of noodling it with her, but um it should be what she expects. Okay. Any more?
Yeah.
Any questions? Next, um.
Uh yeah, it's a rebuilding year. Um no, actually, I want, I wanna start with an appeal to the group. Um so, Com Squad is as we know, the most fun committee. It's also the committee with the most um, remember, owing not to our lack of funness, but to the fact that people are on the board and then they're behoused somewhere else. So they have, I'm not just looking, actually, I'm just looking most to research. So you'll recall that we have, and Patty was sort of here as a, we, we sort of, every year we lose someone.
Never.
And so um Rebecca and I have been on for some time, Whitney's been on for for a year. Um, thank God. It would be great if we could have that person. So if anyone here had extra capacity to join Comm Squad, um that'd be great. Is it Stacy?
I would do it.
Thank you, Stan.
I would, Stan would.
Wow, thank you.
Very, this is.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You are, you are, so. We did also pass with Stacy because when Stacy was sure, she can remember, she knocked out that, so what's your name?
She.
So now, now we, now we're regaining, I feel like, and.
Okay, so somebody else can can decide why, do I need sex?
Not on time, do I need to be on?
This been living here with your babysitting side hustle?
Uh, that's during the weekend, so I'm usually.
So Stacy, we'll bring you up, see, and everything's going on, but thank you, thank you, having, having an additional person, I think is, it's gonna be amazing.
It's.
Come plus, because we got figures. Um so things that happened in the last month, it was to be our month to um put something in the other paper and Whitney did the most lovely interviews.
It was so fun, I have to say, it was great.
With Mira, Erin and um Sue. And um my job was to write that out, um but the foundation, their October spot got kind of preempted by the city's coverage of the Jennifer reading. Friends for transition, that's the word, um and so they didn't have their October spot, which was the one where they remind everything how, everyone how they use the money for the year and in advance of their annual appeal letter.
Right.
So Patty asked me if they could have our November spots to do that in a timely way so that they could. And so uh, well, that's what happened, is so they, they had our November spot and so, because these interviews are lovely, but not, they're appropriate. They're, they're not, that's.
Nice, nice.
Yes, so um so we're gonna circle back to them in um February-ish to do those, um which, so the that was, that was like how, what didn't happen last semester, that was last, last, last month. Um and then actually, I don't know if you wanna talk about what you were doing, um.
Bree and I met, it's just we're.
Anything else, I don't know.
But I have to, you see, I haven't told you.
This is true. So Bree and I met, we, because I had grand plans to, to help support Comm Squad and library with a com, like working towards a comprehensive uh marketing strategy. I'm not abandoning those plans, but also we just had a really great conversation about like vision and reality. Um and I think honestly, it helps that even though there wasn't a a huge budget allocated towards marketing for next year, even it getting cut in half, it's like, was a nice reminder to, that we don't have to go zero to a hundred. So um thinking about how we want to use those funds or recommend using those funds in this year twenty twenty-six and maybe uh have.
Twenty twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, yes, I keep saying.
Which is twenties, it's July of twenty twenty-six, it's very confusing.
Thanks, thanks, thanks. Um what is a, like, can we identify through the initiative and then can we put together a plan to support that initiative and kind of test the pipes with the channels and the audience and how do we get out there, how do we get outside of the sphere of influence? And so to start all of that, to identify what that could be, um this is what I was gonna present to the Comm Squad, what I'd like us to do is to develop a survey to be distributed internally among library staff to see where they feel like strengths are in the marketing realm area that might be a good uh, I don't wanna say pilot necessarily in that conversation, because it's not that things haven't been pushed out before, but a new, a new approach. So we wanna develop a survey, we can have a data-driven, smaller version of a strategic marketing plan. And then again, it's now that door has been opened for having some marketing plans um allocated towards the library, that then the following year, we could, we could see how we can grow that too. So conversation to be had. Um I love this library so much, I'm not going anywhere, so maybe there are future workshops I could facilitate and definitely giving skeleton and structure for the future uh makeup of the Comm Squad to maybe fill in. I'm, I'm here for that, I want that, I, I want to, um like you're in the home part of this, so everyone should be coming here with the authority of the library. So we'll talk more about that next week.
Yeah, we talked about too, using some city resources, you know, in that we have like Andy Communications, I've been sending him a lot of stuff and it comes back beautiful. You know, and he's got that capacity where maybe some of our, you know, library workers don't have the capacity right now. Um and the skill set, you know, he's got, he's a graphic designer, so of course it looks good. Um and then, and also working with Anna and data, like Anna is um a new hire in data for the city, like analyzing data. And um we have a lot of data and she knows how to make data pretty for like the everyday person. Um and so, and also working with Sue, she and Sue are now looking at the GIS maps of South Burlington and putting library part, like where it's like uploading the addresses, not the exact addresses because we don't wanna know exactly who has, but near addresses. And so we could see, it's not done yet, but where, where are our gaps, where are our hotspots, where do we have, where do we not need to focus?
Oh, that's awesome.
Maybe for the foundation, where they send those graders.
Yeah, that's, we can grab it, send it to us, great.
Door to door.
Yeah. That's.
And it also will have. And it also will help as we keep talking about um population and accessibility and being able to see where those pockets are, we don't have library cards and what could be that, right?
Yeah, right.
Library. So one thing that I'm hoping is that we've had a very active scattershot approach to um communications and part of that has been because the library itself does not have a comprehensive kind of
Nothing.
Or a strategic strategic plan and we have strategic, but we're not around marketing and so I would my ideal would be that the library develops that and then we fill in as needed, um and so that's sort of what I'm thinking of.
Yeah, and we talked a little bit about that too, one thing that could be nice to come out of this effort is understanding where the library steps up in the marketing realm and what the Comp Squad does to support and make that a little less uh lendy blurry, but still with overlaps, but just a little bit clearer.
And also understanding capacity of the library staff and the you know, stuff, all the stuff that's going on and changing, like you know, marketing isn't always the first thing on the list, um but it's an important thing, you know, too, so we all have like our kind of we also have new staff members coming on or doing some 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 social media, marketing, various things like that, but it's a nineteen hour meeting position, you know, so just being aware of that and that's not their sole duty.
It's not the natural tendency to promote yourself and to do all that, that's something we really have to work through, we're doing a lot of great things here. We're gonna blow it and hear that out, everything is really built on.
The foundation I mentioned is really trying to work on marketing too, and they're marketing the foundation but also the library, it's sort of a strange combination of things, so get fucked up.
Cause I think I think the foundations and it's trying to figure out its identity.
Yes.
And as we can figure that out while the library is it it'll eventually merge together, there's
Right.
There's a couple levels in the foundation.
So we're not either redundant or but yes.
Great, I've heard um marketing grants, I grants are hard to apply for, or not hard, a lot of work to apply for, so I don't wanna take any of that for
I don't think I have ever seen a marketing grant, ever.
That feels like something like being able to shout your library and your offers from rooftops and getting some grant support from that.
Well, I also think marketing is such a human driven, like it's a worker driven thing, um and so grants really aren't for like staff, you know, grants are usually for things. Uh books, buildings, you know, that which which also take people to do, but I
But what we see in our world is that often when we're hired by nonprofits, it's through grants too, because it's so human driven that how can you find other humans like where this is their area of expertise to do your marketing for you, um
Maybe, like if there was an initiative or something.
But if you have, you're very up bump in, so if you haven't seen something like that from across your
I think it's an interesting use of a grant if you have like a big grant for a big initiative, but library grants tend not tend to either be huge and like un- almost unattainable or very small. And in a well-funded library, like so Burlington, it's off, it's like a strike against us almost for for grants, but I like that, I like that idea of using to hire outside, so you're actually like buying a thing called marketing, you're not doing marketing.
Um ongoing preparations, but thank you Stacy for uh clear board slash
Okay, other business, um in January, um oh, I should say in December, I'm gonna be sending out some things, I wanna try and do pretty strong initiative in January, start thinking about our strategic plan. I'll be probably giving you some stuff in December, maybe some homework, the January meeting for what to do, so anticipate the January eighth meeting to possibly go a little long. Is what I like to do, uh start thinking about a higher level strategic aspect of what we do as a library board, while Bree is absorbing all the things she wants to do. I think we need to do some of that as well and then we will merge that throughout the year, so more to come in December, you may see some emails from you, some things to just start thinking, probing questions whenever something comes up and January, I'll facilitate a session, look focused on that, which may take a little while, so maybe at seven or seven thirty on that day, okay?
And the December meeting is
I was just gonna say, we're not, the December meeting is, we'll not have a meeting in December unless anyone sees the need, Bree, do you feel we need to meet as a board in December, anything you need?
No, just come see me on January fourth. Actually, it's not my weekend, so
Uh again, I think that's something, Bree, let us know if there's anything on the rollout of Sunday hours, if you need anything support that from the board members, if it's a presence or a maybe a talking to, but then let us know as you get closer to that rollout.
Yeah.
What you need from us, cause we're all behind it, we wanna be able to
I think the foundation should have coffee and donuts at that for Sunday.
Yeah. And I was also going to suggest it on some email, but it might be kind of fun for a couple of us to take shifts on the Sundays to at least be around.
Be a good idea, so we're we're all ready to do that, I don't know how many people you want involved in that or if it's helpful, you find it helpful.
If you make your way to the library, we cannot turn you away. It's it's going to be the same.
It will be the same, okay.
A hundred and eighty hours.
Alright, any other business? Alright, meeting to adjourn. At six forty six.